The village board meeting. October seventh, twenty twenty four. For the adult scan for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Katie, I'm sure you have already listed here already. Thank you very much. Second to approve the minutes from September sixteenth, twenty. May twenty second, twenty twenty four, President Fair Commission. June sixth, twenty twenty four, zoning board of appeals. The July tenth, architectural review board. The July twenty second, twenty twenty four, joint library board. August fifth, twenty twenty four, finance and personnel committee. The August fourteenth, architectural review board. The August twenty first, parks and recreation board. The August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, plan commission meeting minutes as presented. I did remove the filing of the July ninth, twenty twenty four, public safety. Is that what you think? That any of the board comes back to us again? Need a motion in a second.
What's the approval file?
I'll second.
The motion to approve and file. I did see a question. Come through, but I think we addressed it right now. Any other questions, edits? If you're in none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so we'll be going to person's request and if you heard, all members of the public are welcome to address the village board on any item. Which would be an agenda item or an non-agenda item. Individual comments are limited to two minutes. We'll give you a little more time if you need more time than that. As the village board, there can be no action or discussion. Certainly, if there's an item out there that the village board agree, we need to discuss in future meetings because of the old meeting law. Anybody wish to speak at this point in time? Scott, would you please come forward on your name and address?
Got Russell. Got Russell five one six West Highland Drive, Highland Drive, Rapton, Wisconsin. Also, I am a, I'm the Ozaki County Board, District fourteen, which is, which is here in Rapton. I want to talk about the topic of that, your books. And I thought a lot about what I was going to talk about, you know, I could go down the path of it, is it safe and secure? Is it connected to the internet? You know, all that fun stuff, but then. I really thought about, you know, what, what really is at stake here? And, you know, right now. I think it's an all time low when it comes to trust of the government, trust of our processes, trust. You know, just across the board. And, you know, if you start at the federal level, no trust, state level, some trust. You get down to here, right, there's more trust at the local level, because I can talk to Mary Pat. I can talk to Dan, Jim Miller. And there's more transparency. And then I was thinking about another electronic device in our election process, another black box. And to me, that is going the opposite direction of transparency, when I think we need more transparency, more trust. And. You know, there's something about. Hand counts, there's something about paper ballots, there's something about. Of two poll books and two people witnessing the signature, right? That, that just brings more transparency. People can understand that. They don't understand. A black palette that you're swiping a driver's license, where's that data go? What's on that palette? They know it's in a book, right? They, they can see it. So, you know, I won't get into it tonight about my concerns about security and the vulnerability of these devices. I'm just starting, I want you to start to think about. In a time where we need more transparency and more trust. I think. These devices, these black boxes are going the totally opposite direction. And I've also heard, well, maybe we should do this because everybody's doing it. Matt Juan's doing it, Cedar Bird's doing it. Well, that is not good enough. An excuse or reason to make a decision like this, right? We're better than Matt Juan, we're better than, than Cedar Bird. So, I just, you know, take your time, this is an important decision. I think we need more transparency and trust and not less, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I'd also like to speak on agenda or on agenda item. Very much. We'll move to business presented by the president. The agenda that is now that needs to be presented this evening. We'll go to resolution, where this is an acting event, reported by management. Before you start and get, we get dispatched to. Um, the meeting reports.
Perfect, thank you. Based upon review and a recommendation from the finance and personnel committee. The community development department is presenting a update to the schedule of fees for building electrical, plumbing, HVAC. And other permits issued through the inspection office. These updates are recommendations actually set forth through the associate, Building Inspectors Association of Southeast Wisconsin. That being said, they take a, that organization takes a regional look and makes recommendations to communities. In an essence, not to fully equalize, but to in a, try to level the playing field and give a, a level of consistency across the southeastern Wisconsin region. That being said, all communities have their own unique nuances within their fee schedules that, you know, are community specific. However, when, when speaking to, you know, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and some of the more common permit fees. That again, level of consistency is looks, looks to be achieved. The village last revisited permit fee schedule in twenty nineteen. What we are recommending, or the village's fees are lower than the rates recommended by this Building Inspectors Association of Southeast Wisconsin. Staff is recommending a number of measured increases to the most building related fees. There are two fees, however, with more significant increases. Utility slash accessory sheds, a maximum of one hundred and fifty square feet, that's item number seven on the schedule. And then also item number sixteen, moving structures over public ways. Working backwards, while moving structures over public ways, in other words, locating a full building down the road. Doesn't happen often, as a matter of fact, it has not happened in over a decade here between myself and Director Wolf. This time here with the village. If in fact, it does need to occur, our fee that is on the books is woefully low, considering the logistics that has to go into that type of operation. We're looking at road closures, we're looking at police and fire escorts, we're looking at potential engineering review of road weight capacities, whatnot. So, the long and short of it is, we want to make sure that it is a little bit more commensurate to the time, energy and effort that the village would have to put forth. With regards to item number seven, the utility structures or sheds. That item, looking to increase that significantly, due to the fact it is a high volume permit and it does take time. The fifteen dollars is quite low when looking at a comparison. And we are looking to be more in line as recommended through this Building Inspectors Association of Southeastern Wisconsin. That being said, not looking to make it exorbitant, however, just looking to recoup costs associated with staff time and reviews. That being said, the fee schedule also includes a new fee for renewable energy systems, i.e. solar and wind. With that, the recommendation coming out of committee is to recommend approval of the twenty, of the updated schedule of permit fees as presented.
Thank you, Jesse.
We're gonna review that one for you, so we don't need like major jumps in face and face or.
Actually, we, the community development department has actually purposely not reviewed it on an annual basis unless there's a red flag. We really try to normalize and keep consistent the fees to the extent we possibly can. We are now at a point five years out where we do need to adjust them as, as times have changed, inflation has set in. But just for the residents, but also the development community, we just try to, in essence. Keep the fees level to the extent we can, and then at a time of change needed, that is why we have not come back on an annual basis. That said, if the village board wishes to see this on an annual basis, absolutely, staff can do that.
Well, I just want to make sure I got it right. Last time we looked at this was two thousand nineteen?
Yes, sir.
I think the fee increases are very reasonable.
Good motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Fifty second is the approval emergency. The mountain, the policy amendment, the change percentage.
Yes, attached to the report of finance was the revised. Village of Grafton recognition and acknowledgement policy coming out of the finance and personnel committee. Change number one, and the significant change to it was on page one in the table of. How the years of service recognition would be calculated. Part-time employee recognition now starts at twenty dollars. A minimum, and then the chamber check amount thereafter shall be a percentage based upon those benchmark years of service. The percentage of the full-time employee recognition that is equal to the part-time employee's FTE equivalent, but no less than twenty dollars. So, instead of simply splitting in half. That full-time employee recognition, so for instance, at ten years. A full-time employee would receive a chamber check in recognition of their years of service, ten years of service in the amount of fifty dollars. What this language does is that at the ten-year mark, a half-time employee or a fifty percent employee would receive a chamber check of. Twenty-five dollars at that ten-year benchmark. If you were a point seven five or a three-quarter time employee, it would be three quarters of that fifty dollar. In essence, the full-time equivalent is matched up with that recognition level of a full-time, so it's a percentage thereof. Not simply just split in half as it had been done in the past. That's the, the big change coming out of committee. The other revision that I want to note, you'll see the red lines on page two in paragraph one. I revisited that and frankly, just. Use the existing language and reorganized it to match paragraph number two, or the formatting of paragraph number two. So, again, that. The substance there remains the same, however, it is just written better, frankly. A retiring employee with ten to nineteen years of service will be recognized by way of proclamation or resolution to be presented as soon as practical following the retirement. A retiring employee with. Let's see here, ten to nineteen years of service will also receive a chamber check for the respective years of service recognition. If significant anniversary date is reached with their final payroll following their retirement. And then lastly, the recognition of the employee's retirement will also be announced the night of the recognition event, regardless of their attendance. Again, all the same information that was originally written, however, organized and much more readable. So, those are the slight revisions coming out of the finance and personnel committee, otherwise it was recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. I appreciate bringing this into consistency. I think that's an appropriate thing to do. We'll need a motion in a second to bring it to the session.
Jesse, I think that's really nice that, that you're recommending that you want to recognize all that beneficials.
This, and, and I guess, and my apologies, trustee Harbeck, I'm not certain if you were able to attend the finance and personnel committee meeting, but. A little bit of background, if I could kind of back up, this is really coming out of the fact. Of that currently, for employee recognition, we're working off of hand-me-down handwritten notes from prior employee committees. And then otherwise, it has just simply been past practice, well, what, what have we done in trying to recollect? So, really just trying to make sure it's formalized, but that. We took a look at who we've recognized in the past and making sure to build that into this statement, so I appreciate the comments, thank you.
You upped it to the twenty dollars, I think that makes more sense and I.
Excellent, thank you.
And just I think what we heard at the finance committee was that these, when that person gets that milestone, that's actually in the envelope at the recognition.
Yes.
Great, anybody else with a comment? All right, let's go to report parks and Brentford, with important group, proof of acceptance and placement of the self-service kayak rental system purchased by the. TAC, Tourism and Promotion Committee to be placed at Veterans, Morgan Park. Jesse, once you.
Certainly, happy to introduce the topic. Recreation Director Hoyer is here to be able to fill in any blanks that I may leave, but the long and short of it is. The village was approached by the Chamber of Commerce Tourism and Promotion Committee. With the idea of placing a self-service, self-service kayak rental system on the banks of the river in Veterans Park. The, the entire cost of the project will be covered through the Tourism and Promotion Committee. They carry the insurance on it, and it is fully maintained by this company that operates the, the kiosk, if you will, or rental system. That being said, frankly, it's just up to the village to allow for, allow. To allow it to be placed within the park and providing a spot for it, which, which we have. That said, it is coming forward with a recommendation for approval by the Park and Recreation Board. Also want to point out, an email was sent to the village board over the weekend. From a village resident, Bill Haas, one two two six Water Terrace, here in the village. In support of the kayak rental system and also made comments regarding the potential for dredging the river at some point. But the email of support for the kayak rental system was printed and provided to the village board as well, even though you were sent a copy, wanted to make sure everybody saw it.
Here you go, into the discussion, our motion in a second, please.
We'll move to the. One second.
The motion in a second. Jesse, I'm gonna throw a question out here right away. So, do we have an idea of what it would cost the village for dredging? Are we talking a thousand dollars, ten thousand, hundreds of thousands?
I can't even put a number to it, other than just anecdotally, I could say by sheer volume, transportation costs, what have you. It, it would be significant, but honestly, I could not put a number to it without doing any research. No, no, it's okay.
This has come up multiple times.
Yeah.
Where, you know, we looked at potentially doing something like that, but it is expensive, it's not a cheap mover and also there. I'm assuming that could affect our water treatment.
It's my understanding that the cost of the village is going to be dominant, it's going to be these pads, concrete pads.
And Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, we actually do have a spot that exists.
And, and then in the event that they choose to expand this to the larger. Wrap the, you talked about, there's enough room.
I know in past meeting minutes, Chad was talked about discussion of implementing possible signage options because of the dam, so bringing awareness to that, who would be aid for that?
That would be.
And after all, vandalism would be, any consideration of putting a camera up in that area? We've got an inexperienced kayak here. And they're not paying attention to the signs. That's not, that's.
There's a couple of areas to get to this point, we had a conversation with our people as well. And you, you don't care about the placement and stop with cars. And one of those things, we, we should be a sixteen-year-old, it's my, my driver's license. Also, if you pay attention to the current in that area, it is not very, very swift through that part of the main channel. I've seen numerous people put in. They have to go out and they had north. I've never seen anyone even pull. And you still have a little bit of a distance, after the.
And will you have instructions to go north?
We can.
That, that would make some. Serious on the algae and it's, it's monkey over in that area, that would be my other concern. I just think there might have been a better place to place it.
Then, then you're actually giving a pulse of the name.
Or Limecham Park.
Well, Limecham Park this time of the year, it's not that, but if you're getting out of that. Where it's a lot better and tighter.
I think it's a great idea, just make sure that we have signage after going around.
All my questions were answered after the meeting.
But I did find it, it looked like the cost is twenty to twenty-five dollars. I looked on the website for the company. That's on about rate?
Yes.
For the rental? Okay.
And then, basically, if you don't have the kayak vacuums, it's so patient.
And is there any cost share at all to the village?
They, basically, the way the chamber is looking at running this, it's a five-year agreement. Revenue through this, it keeps a launch there for the next five years. Revenue starts here than anyways.
Okay, because on the website, it does note the different sized units that you could have. The initial cost, cost share, revenue, things like that, but yeah, I'm assuming the chamber would have told us if there, if we were on the hook for anything.
No, we're not on the hook for anything, if it's possible, I guess. If it ever is, we'll help with the next five years.
And then my other question is, is that permitted throughout the winter that those kayaks stay there?
Yes, can be, or are we?
Okay. I would, I would like to see them come in, so they're not, they're not affected by the weather, but I guess the company doesn't care.
It's, it's all their responsibility or something. They're on the hook for it, for the rent themselves.
I think it's a great idea too, and I do worry, Mary Pat, about the safety of somebody accidentally going right instead of left. And if anybody's spinning a kayak in the river lately, it can get tough. You bottom out easily. The wire level as well, and the sediment is high, so hopefully, we can address that. Curious to know what the training programs comment on and recommendations that were passed along, and this is.
A lot of, a lot of, I wrote an email to Chad, a lot of what you've heard tonight, signage. You know, from a lawyer's point of view, the company, as Chad indicates, the company is indemnifying the village, the company is insuring, providing the insurance. But I understand the concerns, you know, with the, with the dam there, there is, you know. There is a launch there already, but, but we're providing, or now kayaks are being provided, so. I was comfortable with, with the setup or with the agreement, you know. We could, we could clear it with, with Civic, but.
And they made this the same concern that everyone has about the signing.
Oh, so. Sure.
Just one more comment, I think this was interesting, in McQuinicle. The library provides checkout of paddle boards and hives. Which I thought was pretty, well, I think about outside the box. And you take your library card in, you have it for a day or two, you know, I, I looked it up online and it's, you know, right outside the library, so Amanda, maybe. Yeah, yeah, so I thought that was pretty cool, but you know, we'll see how this works out. Yeah, and all the others would think.
Just a couple of comments by me and the brains. The, the dynamics of the river change, you know, we can have a. At decade storms in summer, like we did this year, where we had several inches, the dynamics on that river changes like this. How much spillage goes over the dam by the, the gate that's operated by. And be cautious, and I, I get that if one's carrying a phone and you get too close to the dam, it's going to geocash and tell you that you're too close to the dam, but people may or may. Concern about that, however, I think we can only do so much if people want to go over the dam. Sensible rain on that, so I certainly vote for this. And, and I guess we'll find your commitments and see how it goes. Is there any escape clause on this, if we figure that this is not working to our advantage here?
Yeah, there is, there is a ability for us to, on our end. To lock people out of that app, that they are unable to rent from that location. In the event that the river, let's say there's a flood, river flow is really, really high, it's dangerous, we can lock that running unit up.
Is there a minimum age requirement? I'm more concerned about kids not having the experience than adults.
Briefly, yeah. So.
There's, there are quite a few communities in Wisconsin.
Well, it appears that, you know, we're looking at the Milwaukee River being a potential answer with the dam, and we all get that. But clearly, it's a mill pond right now in North. A little bit urban, it's fairly slow, once we hit Martha Beach, it's a little faster. And again, I think we should bring up a good point, McQuinicle is a, is a great, you know, great. A lot of these places have lakes and have dams, and you know, they make the, the deeper water by obstructions in the water, so. Again, this company seems to want to take all the liability, and we're covered by that liability and.
Jesse, I wouldn't expect you to know, but is there a way we can figure out, like? What would it, a ballpark figure to dredge that area? I wouldn't expect you to know that tonight, but it is a nice, or looking, for people looking out of the pavilion, it's gonna not be pretty.
That, that could be a different business item, right now, the discussion at hand is regarding the. Chamber of Commerce and their Tourism Promotion Committee talking about a self-service kayak rental. That said, if the village board wishes, we can put that notion and look to provide staff direction on a future agenda.
I would agree, Jim, I did bring that up because it brought up, and I agree with your point, that that's something we probably want to look at in the future. You know, potentially look at this. My response back to the citizen who did status, I said, you know, probably looking at something out of twenty twenty-six. Pretty heavy budget item, but I don't. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that was curious. Uh, let's go to the approval of the purchase of one point four or five acres in the Stonewall subdivision for purchase price not to exceed two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Certainly, uh, in accord with past practice, um, the village is looking to utilize impact fee dollars to purchase one point four or five acres of land within the Stonewall subdivision on the west side of the village for the purposes of establishing a um new village park. Um, that being said, the process in general is that as a um uh residential subdivision is platted, parkland is designated within that plat. Um, and then there is an appraisal that is um obtained by the village, shared with the developer. The developer can either agree to that appraisal or get their own appraisal and enter into a negotiation with the village. In this particular case, uh, the village's um appraisal was shared with Mr. Tillman, the developer of the Stonewall uh subdivision. And that being said, he is agreeable to the purchase price of not to exceed three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The basis of that valuation is due to the fact that technically that land could have been platted as additional single-family residential lots. That is what drove the value of that land to this price. It is not as though we're just buying a um vacant parcel somewhere on speculation. This is part of a residential neighborhood that was platted. There was a part of that purposely set aside as parkland and then appraised um accordingly. So again, that value is driven because technically that land could have been platted for single-family residential, which carries a higher value than parkland. Therefore, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars um for the um purchase of the land has been agreed upon, was discussed in detail at the Park and Recreation Board, and is brought forward for um approval by the village board to finalize that purchase of parkland. Again, those funds come out of um impact fee dollars, which are collected as part of new development. Therefore, that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar cost does not impact um existing taxpayers. It is all paid for through new development.
Free motion in second to approve purchase of one point four five acres of land in the Stonewall subdivision for a purchase priced not to exceed three sixty land.
I'll make the motion to approve.
One second.
Motion in second, Dallas. I see if there's any discussion on this. This is a um, we've gone through this before with the developments. This is really nothing new, but I believe we should discuss it. I'll start at this end, Dave. Yeah.
Um, Nancy, we do have um rules with new subject agreements coming in that we would like to provide parkland for those.
Hmm.
Rooms, correct?
Correct. Uh, not only in our future land use plan, but also in our outdoor com- comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Uh, the village has guidelines in which we look to achieve to make sure we are providing outdoor amenities um for the residents. Hmm.
And so we have another portion of Hawks Bridge coming up, that's five point six acres.
Yep.
Um, is the village going to have to purchase that also to?
It 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 depends. Yes, it all depends on how that next stage is plotted out, but yes, we would look to purchase that. Um, again, with impact fees um to establish the um uh parkland.
And those impact fees are coming from?
New development.
Home center in that area.
Correct, the new development. Um, so there's, when permits are taken out, um, there is a portion of that permit fee is collected as impact fees that are applied, are held and directly applied for this purpose specifically. That being said, by statute, we have to expend those funds within seven years, and we are within that window, number one. But number two, it is in accord with the reasoning behind having that impact fee in place. So.
I think that's approximately forty-seven hundred dollars per dwelling.
Uh, that sounds right. We uh earlier this year, we did do a study and we um renewed or um reestablished our impact fees, and frankly, I would have to look back at it. I don't want to misquote the number, but yeah.
And one last question. Are those impact fees kept in the general fund?
No, there's segregated account. It's a segregated account because it is for impact fees are collected for very specific purposes, and therefore it it's it's segregated, is not part of the general fund.
Called impact fees somewhere in the.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yep.
Thank you. And does the impact fees can only be used for new development or addition to something new to an existing building?
Did our impact fees in this particular case are to establish a new park. We cannot use impact fees to uh replace a place structure that was existing. Only new amenities uh can have impact fees applied towards them.
Andy. Any other discussion? Okay, wait a motion in a second. I'll give her say, I'm sorry, uh, Tom, I can't take questions right now. From the gallery, it's not public hearing. I apologize. Um, so uh, a motion in a second. I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. And then dash one twenty of the village of Grafton is.
Certainly, um, earlier this year, the uh ordinance of of the governing the boards committees and commissions for the village of Grafton was updated. That being said, with the creation of the Ozaki Central Fire Department and their Board of Directors, we need to revisit a portion of this ordinance, in particular, the Public Safety Committee. The Public Safety Committee is currently comprised of three Village of Grafton representatives and two Town of Grafton representatives due to the fact there's a service contract with the Town of Grafton for fire and EMS services. That being said, um, with the establishment of the Ozaki Central Fire Department and their Board of Directors, the Town of Grafton representation on the village's Public Safety Committee is no longer needed. Therefore, um, I prepared a code update that simply um updates the membership of the Public Safety Committee, um, removing the two Town of Grafton uh um board members and replacing them with citizen members. So there would be two trustees and three citizen members appointed um to the Public Safety Committee. Um, paragraph number eight or paragraph A two simply clarifies what a quorum would be because of this new membership. Simply a quorum of the Public Safety Committee would be three members, whether it's the trustees or the citizen members, as long as there are three, that would constitute a quorum. And then the remainder of that ordinance update would simply remove um uh mention of the fire department as that will be handled by the Ozaki Central Fire Department Board of Directors and not the village's Public Safety Committee. Now, in the future, the um this ordinance, this portion of the code will have to be revisited with regards to a police and fire commission as well. At this point in time, the working model that we have with regards to staffing for the Ozaki Central Fire Department is that all employees will be for twenty twenty-five Village of Grafton employees. The reason for this approach is due to the fact there are certain deadlines in order to um for a new entity to sign up and become a member of the Wisconsin Retirement System, the pension program, and also to sign up for and enact a health insurance program effective um January one. That said, being as late in the year as we are with regards to the intergovernmental agreement coming online, the boards and the commissions being able to meet, the fire board being able to meet and start to get organized and make decisions. Um, the best approach to ensure that we maintain um benefits and wages and a pension for these fire department employees is to bring them under the Village of Grafton umbrella for twenty twenty-five, which will be reimbursed through the Ozaki Central Fire Department. But that will help maintain those wages and benefits. Therefore, we need to, because they would be village employees, we need to retain our police and fire commission as it sits right now today. Moving forward, as the Ozaki Central Fire Department becomes its own entity and the employees transfer over to them as an independent entity, they will have their own fire commission. That is when we will update our code with regards to the police and fire commission. At this time, this code update solely focuses on the Public Safety Committee because the fire department has their Board of Directors in place.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, I need a moment, second to bring this up for discussion.
Okay.
Very good. Uh, I'll I'll start this off uh real quickly here. Um, so essentially, what we're planning on doing here with police and fire commission, uh, or I'm sorry, with the Public Safety Commission is as soon as we get this uh identified, approved, uh revised over the village four months ago, is to appoint two citizen members here, uh probably at the next meeting, so we can give uh trustee with it. Obviously, I think the uh OCFD will be meeting sometime this week, I think Thursday this week.
Yes.
Continue to work on their items. So essentially, this town has representation
Correct.
Through the transitioning department right now, and uh we will still have public safety. We will still have reports from the fire department on stats and also from the police department on stats and any other police business. However, um, I think moving forward, fire department will still be reporting because there's still a village uh a village entity until January first. Uh, so it's going to be kind of a little bit of dual reporting for chief, but that's just the city business. That's like, that's my comment. Any other questions? That's all I want. Yeah. Uh, let's start with Jim.
So. On this particular proposal, we're going to go from a majority of the board will be the citizen members. We're going to have two trustees and three citizen members.
Hmm.
Previously, we used to have three trustees on this.
Hmm.
My concern is you could actually elective officials making policy with the Public Safety Committee. While a minority of trustees could be.
Let's go step in. Actually, actually, nope. Um, the Public Safety Committee is a recommending body to the village board. The Public Safety Committee does not adopt policy. Um, they make recommendations to the village board. Any final policy decisions or large purchasing decisions or budgeting decisions lie with the village board, not the committee. As with the other subcommittees, they're recommending up to the village board for that final decision.
One clarification, if we adapt this tonight, is it effective immediately and what is the next public safety?
Uh, if it is adopted this evening, um, it would go into effect, and therefore, at our next meeting, we would look to bring appointees to the village board for action. Um, that being said, then next month's um Public Safety Committee meeting would have the two trustees and three citizen members um as members.
Jim, I had the same concern when I first looked at this, but then I I had to remember that everything comes to us as a whole for the final for improvement. Even though Public Safety recommends, it doesn't mean it's going to get passed out.
Right.
I have one more question. Um, can you one? So the way we will be to ensure overall public safety through review of police and inspection operations and recommendations to other pertinent committees or boards. Is there other inspection operations that will happen with police, or should that part come on as well?
Uh, that that could come out. Um, you could say it does apply because the police department does help with the issuance of liquor licenses, the review of liquor licenses um and operators licenses are um so it it's applicable, um, but I'm open. I mean, i- if the board feels it could come out, but it's not a primary function of the police department.
I think it should stay there. Just.
Hmm. Yeah.
Well, I think the fact is inspections don't cause you to move from that group at the bottom of the.
That is true. That is true. Okay.
That's saying, oh, I think number eight and B eight in the unit provision as well. Because it 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 seems like it's not relevant.
That that makes sense.
Make make sense to me. Okay.
Sure. So, um, I I do think that's my concern about three um three citizens and two elected officials. And if you understand that whatever happens there, whatever comes up to the village board level, people then have the final say. However, there is the chance that um three citizens may vote to not authorize something, let's say, and then the two elected officials might be interested in something, and then it does not come to the village board. I love the idea of having citizens on the committees. I think it's really been great. But this committee to me is high level, and the experience that we have on public safety, um, the trustees know some of the backstory. Chief Kepanair is able to provide a lot of information to them. I I would rather three trustees and two citizen. I just feel like that's a stronger committee with more. That's I think.
Here we go. Uh, well, uh, Mr. President, one nuts and bolts recommendation might be on appointment since your your members aren't coming from the Town of Grafton board anymore. Uh, the appointment of village, the village trustee and citizen members of the Public Safety Committee should be appointed by the village president and confirmed by the village board. It's kind of a piggy tack, but uh all all members of the committee would be recommended by you, confirmed by them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I, you know, honestly, um, I do like that citizens' needs, and I think as we look in the walk box in village government, I'd like to have a majority of, I think it's good for us, rather than a majority of citizens down there, so they can run more. I think we get a lot of concerns and complaints that some integrated to things that people don't understand. And I think having them engage, uh, we get us through the bridge actually, and helping help the public at large. Finance, you know, you definitely had majority of of trustees on, we get different sites when people. Then finance or business opportunities that can ask for a question. I think when we look to appoint people, I will appoint people to our processes and also to have they have an interest specific. Maybe. I think in my impression, I think we have a deep, well, out there. I would prefer to have more that that board has a challenge, or you think you're going the wrong way, I trust. That's what that board, that's what's that board.
Sure, but you do have a total of five members on finance or red card. And three of those are elected. I don't look at that for public safety, so that's just.
But having three elected members on that board doesn't guarantee that they would still get up to this level anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. That's absolutely true. I just think it's such a high level thing.
Understood.
Public safety, that's, you know. I should.
All right, so we have a motion in second time this, uh, so, um, we have to do. And we have a motion, why don't we just go right to the board on that?
Actually, if I may, um, Mr. President, you may want to ask the board to um approve uh with the revisions as noted, being attorney her brands note that is appointed by the village president and confirmed by the village board that membership, but then also striking the uh inspection um um nomenclature as well.
Andy, uh, who was the um?
Uh, motion was made by trustee law, the second was made by trustee. Okay, so.
Second, we will vote here, all in favor to adopt the ordinance on any chapter with the amendments, uh, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Yeah, very good. Great. Well, next, let's talk about uh Timothy Woodin Building. If the wooden building is incorporated.
All right, um. A- as mentioned earlier this year, um, this is a matter of getting the paperwork caught up with reality. Um, earlier this year, the previous operator of the Timothy Wooden Building located on Broad Street, directly adjacent to our um public library, uh, was for a long time, uh, since um two thousand and five, operated by the North Shore Academy of the Arts. They leased the building from the uh village and then operated the building and subleased uh sublet space to tenants such as artists, exercise classes, uh, music teachers, theater groups, and so forth, just to name a few. With the dissolution of the NSA A um earlier this year, and thus the um primary leasehold going away, a new operator, Jamie Willie, uh stepped forward to continue the use of the Timothy Wooden Building uh in a very similar manner in that it would be utilized for much the same type of subtenant uses. Um, Ms. Willie has established a five oh one C three nonprofit, the Wooden Legacy Foundation Incorporated, to take the place and resume the duty. To take the place and resume the duties that were vacated by the North Shore Academy of the Arts. Working very closely with Ms. Willie, um, and, uh, village attorney Herbrand, a new lease document, it was prepared, it is attached. For the village board for consideration. It is important to note, the majority of this language is either. Very, very similar or exactly the same as the previous lease that we had with the North Shore Academy of the Arts. However, there are some significant updates that I wanted to walk through with the board. We did add a specific definition, um, to of what the outdoor classroom space is and where it's located. We added language in article two of the lease, um, that it may be renegotiated without the need for termination. Um, basically that is if a situation arises where a certain term or terms within the leasehold. Are unfavorable either to the village or, um, the Wooden Legacy Foundation Incorporated. Um, we can enter into a renegotiation, but the leasehold stays in effect during the course of that renegotiation. Um, added language, article three A in particular, noting the village's commitment to provide financial and staff resources for general improvements and maintenance. Within the constraints of our overall budget. We recognize the fact that the village's resources are finite, however. I felt it was important, as did the new operator, that a, um, representation be made, that there be more of a proactive approach. To the ongoing operation and maintenance of the building, not only from the village's side, but also the operators and subtenants side. That being said, um, we added language that the tenant or subtenants are responsible for the maintenance of the outdoor classroom area, that way it does not fall into. Um, any further, uh, disrepair, um, they are looking at. Step one, working with our public works department to get a mulch delivery to refresh that area and then looking to, um, clean it up with regards to the landscaping. Um. Moving down the next point here, we clarified the definition of the common area. Um, more specifically, uh, within the agreement. We also set forth in article eight A, how work orders for repairs will be handled. Um, the village, it is a village building, the village does retain responsibility for, um, a level of repairs and maintenance. That being said, um, the, um, operator, the Wooden Legacy Foundation. Would utilize our online hub through the village's website for some middle of work orders for repairs. This achieves many different things. Number one, it achieves. A a creation of a record of how often are we there, what have we fixed, how much time have we spent, what are the resources associated with that? It also tracks it for the, um, tenants as well as the building operator. And then also, I'm able to generate an activity report for budgeting purposes as far as what are we looking at with regards to setting forth. Um, and allocating village financial resources for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the building. At least the villagers share thereof. Um, one item that was, um, talked about, uh, with with the, uh, Wooden Legacy Foundation is. A decrease in the maximum quote unquote out of pocket. Um, payments for heating and or elevator repairs. This language is found in article eight, C and D. Um, this was really intended to alleviate financial stress on the newly created nonprofit entity, they they are brand new, they are just getting, um, up and running. Um, that being said, um, for the time being, looking to dial back the amount of maximum out of pocket. Uh, for those, uh, repairs related to the HVAC system and or elevator. That being said, um, the village does ensure the building and the village has, um. Uh, more resources available to it to address these large issues. Um, so just looking to kind of, uh, level the playing field a little bit, so to speak. Um, that said. Um, after again, uh, significant discussions with not only the new operator, the Wooden Legacy Foundation. But also working very closely with Attorney Herbrand, I believe we are in a very good spot to bring this primary lease to the village board. Um, for action, an important side note that isn't, um, related, but not a part of this. Um, as a courtesy and quite frankly, to assist the new, um, operator. Um, I worked with Attorney Herbrand to create, um, templates for the sub leases. That set forth terms and conditions for the tenants, um, the, the, um, Zumba class, the, the, um. Weavers that are in there, the other art classes in there and so forth, really setting forth specifically to paper because none of the leaseholds right now. Subtenant leases are on paper, they're all verbal. That being said, this, these documents and templates, um, Ms. Willie and the Wooden Legacy Foundation could utilize. To set forth new leaseholds with tenants, setting forth what their rent is, what their responsibilities are with regards to. A general upkeep and maintenance of the building, but also what they are liable for, basically you break it, you buy it kind of thing. But also noting that the village is here to support with ongoing maintenance as well, really looking to make it abundantly clear and formalize those sub leases. That is not for an action item for the village board, but it is related and important, uh, germane to the discussion this evening. This primary lease again is with the Wooden Legacy Foundation, the new nonprofit that would be operating the building in a, in a similar manner as the previous operator dating back to two thousand and five.
For discussion and looking forward to the motion to approve the lease agreement. See foundation incorporated to operate Timothy Wooden Building.
I'll make most of two group.
Awesome.
Okay, uh, Jesse, I'll start with this one. Um, I I guess there, um, there may be some prospective tenants that should be coming. On board here and. Concern regarding the maximum out of pocket and, uh, in the leases. Costs are too expensive, um, is that primarily something that protect both Ms. Riley and us in the case of a.
I- i- if something catastrophic were to happen, yes, the village in essence reserves the right to shut down the building. Heaven forbid there be a fire in the building and make it, um, uninhabitable or a portion thereof, or restrict ADA access through the elevator. We would have to close the building, so frankly, that is a protection on both sides. So that it's understood that the village reserves the right, it is not an arbitrary. Clause to just close the building, but it is meant to say, please be aware. If something catastrophic happens, we have the ability to close up the building to ensure it is safe and sound, um, for use.
So this is the cost of one dollar per year.
Yes, yes.
It's no different than the last person who's in charge.
Same.
Um, and I I did see, I think I'm teaching these, so the tenants or. Um, the person in charge, she, they will pay for all internet, heat, water.
Correct.
Do you have any idea how how much that's been over the, you know, past few years?
Um, I I actually asked for that report, um, late last week, unfortunately, Paul was out of the office at Civmic, um, annual media, our insurance company's annual meeting, I do not have that report. That being said, um, currently, the, um. We Energies and the Spectrum Internet bills are being paid by the village during this transition period and they would be transferred over to, um, the the nonprofit. Um, I'm going to go out on a limb and make an assumption that they are manageable costs. Um, as the previous North Shore Academy of the Arts was able to cover those costs with no assistance from the village. Um, additionally, um, going back to my related comments about those, um, formalized sub leases. That will call for if a tenant looks to operate a window air conditioning unit. They may have to chip in for additional utility costs because that is above and beyond standard lamps and lights and other fixtures, so. I'm looking to make sure that the mechanisms are there to capture those costs, but I have no reason to believe it is not. Manageable for the nonprofit because again, the previous nonprofit was in fact, um, handling those costs with no assistance from the village.
And and the previous manager, you know, the costs just for the HVAC repairs and elevator repairs were seventy five hundred dollars max. Um, so this is, you know, half of that. Um. You know how many tenant spaces there are possible there and how many tenants, uh?
Boy, there, there, in theory, there, there could be quite a few tenant spaces, if if you look to split some existing rooms or, um. Or if one tenant takes up multiple rooms, um, i- the number varies, um, I'm going to go ahead and say just a rough number. Uh, we could probably start with maybe ten, twelve. Um, in total, um, you know, that said, again, if if, um, they look to divvy up larger rooms, you could potentially make some more tenant spaces in there. Or, um, just different times, um, utilize that multiple tenants could utilize the gymnasium, so again. A a a larger number of tenants could be accommodated or a significant number of tenants could be accommodated.
Fill the building with, you know, artists or other types of tenants, um, and that the costs are not prohibitive to those.
I I will say this, when I first came to the board, when NSA announced that they were looking to step away from operating the building. Quite frankly, I I came to the board with, um, a a poor attitude about the building in general. It's an older building, there, there's some, uh, repairs and maintenance that are needed, it is a, um, unique type of use of that building. Um, that being said, Ms. Willie and how she came forward, her vision, her energy, and frankly, her, um. Actions have really brought me around to more of a positive outlook on this building and the operation thereof. She is looking to be onsite, proactive, in regular communication with the tenants, we're looking to establish those formalized sub leases as well. And so, and and she is not afraid to have discussions with potential other tenants, in essence advertise if you will. And I'm more than happy to be a little bit more proactive from the village's side as well, to really look to ensure the success of the Timothy Wooden Building.
Uh, Jesse, in in regards to, uh, renegotiating. Portions of the lease that may become untenable on either. How, what what is the village boards, what's the intent of the village boards' interaction when things get changed?
Oh, absolutely, any change to the lease would have to come to the village board for approval, so let let's pick on something pretty simple, those out of pocket maximums. Um, you know, for instance, the old lease with the North Shore Academy of the Arts had a three thousand five hundred dollar annual maximum out of pocket, if you will, for HVAC repairs. This new document has a fifteen hundred dollar for the Wooden Legacy Foundation. Um, let's say, three years down the line, we're we're starting to see some upticks in costs and we want to have, and the village board would like to see, or I would recommend to the village board. To up that fifteen hundred dollar level. I can have that discussion with the board, I can have that discussion with the operator, but. In order to change that number, village board action would be required, so hence the renegotiation, but the existing lease stays in effect. To answer your question directly, the village board has to take action to change anything. Correct.
Back to you, you didn't spend a lot of time.
Having the possible going MOVs, there's a right to them, they have seven capital typing rights to the patrons of the Grafton Library. How is that going to be monitored, if they're going to be watching that?
Yeah, quite frankly, I would look to have regular discussions if Amanda sees an issue with, um. We'll we'll call it, uh, wooden building tenants clogging up the library parking lot. She can let me know and I can look to enforce these terms of this lease and explain, folks, you're going to have to look at on-street parking. Or work around, if you have a higher, um, traffic use, like a new subtenant has a little bit more, a higher membership, if you will. Um, they will have to utilize the on-street parking, look to avoid direct conflicts with busy times at the library. But that is absolutely something that can be monitored between, um, Director Klopman and myself.
Concerned about that, which is a good thing, is usually full. And then does the village call that out?
Yes, yep.
So, will be consideration that maybe tenants have something later in the evening going on there, we don't know what kind of businesses that are being done, I feel you in top of that.
Right, right.
Uh, just a comment, Jesse, I I like what I'm hearing from you as far as. You want to do what you can to keep that facility glow going. There's a lot of history there.
Yes, sir.
For me as a longtime resident, that was. The place to be.
I suppose.
And I'm hoping we can work together with this new tenant and keep that structure going strong.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So we carry the insurance on this building, correct?
Correct, it's a village building, yep. Yes.
And make it clear that we're not going to covet any personal property.
Correct, yep, yep.
Negotiation and, um, you know, even when it came to, uh, the costs of, you know, the cost that for sure to, um. With legacy foundation. Give flexibility and the time and talent that you spend on, thank you very much. Alright, so to pick a vote on this, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. I'm ready to give a new lease with, uh, Jody well. Hey, let's go to the informational report of all Badger Books.
Certainly, uh, this, this, earlier this year, uh, in spring, we, uh, the village annually adopt a five-year capital improvement plan. As part of that capital improvement plan, um, an expenditure for the purchase, um, or potential purchase of. Um, election software known as Badger Books was, uh, included within the capital improvement plan. Um, that being said, uh, at that time, the the village board, understanding that it was a plan, not. Setting forth or committing specific purchases nor funding, um, asked for additional information. Um, about Badger Books, what is it, how's it work, um, type type of informational, um, uh, presentation. That being said, the the purchase, um, I I give the board a heads up, it will be included. As part of my executive, recommended executive budget to the board for your consideration during the budget workshops. But to meet the request of the board for additional information, uh, we wanted to make sure we got out in front of the executive budget being published, um, later this week. That said, um, the. It is important to note, I will turn this over to our village clerk Katie Olson to walk through her report, but a couple of things that are really important to note. Number one. Badger Books is not for the November election, this is not a decision, uh, uh, action requested, this is for information, what is Badger Books, how's it work? Type of si- uh, presentation, this is not asking for the purchase of Badger Books, nor is it asking for, um, a budget allocation for Badger Books. So it is not for the November election, I want to be very upfront about that. The intent would be if this, if this project were to progress through the budgeting process. Would be to purchase and set up Badger Books in two thousand and twenty-five, the first use would actually be planned for the spring election of two thousand and twenty-six. Um, that is the timeframe that staff has identified, but to be clear. In order for the village to move forward with Badger Books, there are several benchmarks that would need to be, um, cleared. First, as I mentioned, Badger Books in accord with the capital improvement plan will be included with the executive budget. That's going to be published out to the village board for consideration, um, later this week. At the budget workshops, the village board may strike it from the budget. And reallocate the funds elsewhere, if if the, um, discussion takes us in that direction. At the budget public hearing, if there are concerns raised, if the trustees feel as though it is not a worthwhile project. It can be stricken from the budget at that point in time prior to final adoption. We've got two benchmarks, the third benchmark would be the fact that the cost of Badger Books and associated equipment, um, uh. Will probably exceed the village administrator's spending capacity, therefore entering into that contract and purchase would have to come before the village board. Let's say it is budgeted, it goes through, is part of the two thousand and twenty-five budget, the the purchase and implementation of it, because I believe it will exceed my. Uh, um, authority, spending authority. Um, the village board has one more. Opportunity to say yes or no to that project, so to be very clear, this is not intended for use if all approvals are granted. Until spring of two thousand and twenty-six and. Um, there are multiple stops along the way for the village board to review and make a decision whether it's a go, no-go with regards to. Um, pursuing the project of Badger Books. That said, um, the information, uh, was requested and I wanted to provide the opportunity to our village clerk to walk through again. What is Badger Books, what does it do, what do we think we would see as advantages for the board's in- information?
Okay, um, so Badger Books is literally just that, it is an Eve's full book. Um, so it is an electronic form of the full book. The data is transferred directly from our WIS vote system, which is a statewide voter registration system, uh. Maintains all of our data from Wisconsin elections within the WIS vote system. The data is downloaded directly into Badger Books. Um, through use of a secure like flash drive, um, I'm not quite sure how it works, I would be trained on it. Once we did that purchase, if we did that purchase. Um. But the information it downloads would be the exact same information that is downloaded when you print your full books on paper copies. It is that exact same information. Um, there is nothing additional to it. So then. Um, there is nothing additional to it. So then. The the the, there is a bank of computers. And when people come in to um to vote on Election Day, they come to one of those computers, I don't know if anyone has witnessed them in use. Um, they come to a bank of computers, which are all, they all talk to each other, but they're all maintained um. Within that bank of computers on their own server that travels with them. So in no way is this connected to the internets. Um, and with that being said, in no way is it connected to the machines that you cast your ballot in. So those are two completely different systems. Um, the the data then after the election is then transferred back into. The WISVOTE system via that USB port. Um, the very next day and all the information that was gathered that day. Uh, is available for the public to view immediately. Uh, so this would see inefficiency in my time as the clerk's department for all of the. Uh, the all the things that we need to do in the clerk's department following the election, it can take. It can take up to forty-five days to enter all of that information, um, including voter registrations, uh reconciling the poll books. Uh, recording voter participation, recording voter numbers, um, that is all uploaded immediately the next day. So no longer would I have to sit there for weeks on end scanning. The poll book and the barcodes in the poll book to enter all that information into WISVOTE is automatically uploaded. Um, this would open me up for weeks of availability that I could do other things with my job. Um, it also eliminates some pre-election tasks that we currently do. So right now, we do prenumbering of absentee ballots, um, so after our final day of. In-person absentee voting, which is that Friday before the election. Um, we spend that entire weekend, Carmen and I, my deputy clerk and I. Spend the entire weekend going through all of the absentee ballots and prenumbering them for the poll books. Uh, this would eliminate us doing that. Um, because those would no longer be prenumbered and they would be processed in real time at the election on election day. With a separate group of of um election inspectors. That do work in pairs and they have their own computer just to process the. Um, or scan in, I should say, the absentee ballots. Um, it would save us, we do print, uh, we would still be printing that poll book, paper poll books, one copy. As a backup in case anything that should happen to fail with the computer system. So, um, but there would be a, you know, a seen cost, um. Or seeing savings in the cost, but we would be printing far less paper. Um, and therefore less ink, less paper. We would also see an efficiency in the poll workers. Uh, right now. We have two poll workers that work at each reporting units, which is words one through two. Reinfore, so on and so forth. Um. This would eliminate the need to have those separates uh poll workers at each table. Uh, because when you come in, you can use any one of the computers that are available there for you. Uh, and it just automatically prints you a voter number and then you take that to a table. Where the poll workers are still sitting and they still work in pairs. Um, to initial the ballots and hand them out as needed, um, when the voters come in. So, a lot of people, we we see in. Forgive me for saying this, we see an aging community in our election inspectors, a lot of them, um. You know, as the years roll on, they love coming back and they love working for the village of Grafton. Um, they they ask to come back every year and I don't know what I would do without them. But they, I do see a struggle in them, you know, they they start to lose their ability to. Write, they, you know, it's hard for them to see. So this would be a good opportunity to put them in front of a computer, um, where they could. They wouldn't have to write anything, um, they wouldn't have to necessarily. Look through this poll book that is, you know, we've got ten names listed on a page and they have to scroll down to the. Correct one, it would just automatically pop up on their screen when they scan that driver's license. So, um, with that being said, it would eliminate the human error that we sometimes see. In the the people working in paper poll books, uh, when they get the wrong person, they have them sign next to the wrong name. Therefore, when we scan it in, we're scanning the wrong person. Um, and that's just human error, uh, so this would eliminate a lot of that human error, not that we have a lot of it, but. It would eliminate um that sort of human error. Uh, and I, as far as security goes, like I said, it's all connected, all the computers talk to each other within that building. And they are all serviced by one server, um, that is only connected to those computers and uh all the data. Is downloaded onto a USB port the day before and uploaded the next day back into WISVOTE. So, um, the very secure process. And as I said in the beginning, it is not connected to the casting of ballots whatsoever. The machines are a standalone unit and those are also, um. You know, not connected to the internet in any way, shape or form, so as far as security, I mean, this is. If I didn't feel that these were secure, I wouldn't be recommending it, um, elections are. My most important part of my job and I value my job. So, I would not be recommending this if I thought that there were any issues with the security or integrity of elections. Any questions?
Thank you, Katie, one question here, uh, let's start.
Um, as far as your poll book is generated now, how do you generate the paper poll book that's in that now?
We print it from WISVOTE.
So you're actually, you're going to a secure website and downloading?
Yes. Yes.
Um, are these terminals where you, this is essentially. Registering your attendance and voting, because you still have to go and get it bowled. Are these terminals a self-serve terminal or are they an attended terminal? That I'm hand, I'm literally handing the attendance by driver's license. They're scanning it, saying, is that you, and then I'm signing off on it per se, however, I do, whether it's electronically or literally.
Yes, that is exactly right.
It eliminates the duplicated books and the papers essentially.
Yes, yes, the voter would still come in, there is still an election inspector sitting behind the computer. That verifies your ID, um, they they can either scan the ID with a scanner or they can enter it in. Um, and then the name pops up, they verify that that is the name and address when the voter states their name and address. Um, they click on it and then uh uh voter number is printed from the computer. Um, so it would eliminate that, those sort of mistakes as well. I mean, automatically generates the next voter number in mind, so. Um, then they would take those, the poll book or to the ballot tables and they would receive their ballot there.
Um, sure, I have a couple of questions, Katie. Um, so when I was looking it up online, um, one of the things it said is that. It doesn't require a picture ID, but it, the options are there for providing a social security number. A date of birth, a driver's license number, but I'm hearing you say there is a picture requirement.
For for voting purposes, uh, picture ID is required to to vote. Um, I think maybe what that's referring to is the registration process. The registration process does not require a photo ID, but it does require a proof of residence. So, which could be a bank statement, you know, it could be your driver's license. Um, uh, utility bill, uh, lease.
Okay.
So, and um, so if we would go to something like this uh on a regular basis.
I heard you say that the the first time we would use this, we would have a backup system available, we would have paper copies.
Yes, we are actually, if we go to the Badger system, you are required to print a backup poll book copy.
Okay.
So, but only one, you don't have to print a duplicate copy of all of that, so.
Okay, because I I did see that they recommend that you use two systems, two different systems just in case. Um, so when we vote currently and we're done voting, we take our ballot to the machine. When we feed it in, is that just recognizing that that number has voted, it doesn't, it's not. Recognizing our vote, or is it recognizing the vote?
It's it's not connected to you at all, the ballot is anonymous, as you would put it, uh, so that. That's um voter number that generates that you hand over to the people that give you the ballot. So when you put the ballot through the machine, it has no idea who you are or what number you are. It's just taking the next ballot in line, it's counting the ballots.
So it's just counting the ballots, it's not registering our vote?
Correct, it's, well, it's, it registers your vote, the machines do, okay. Um, the machines scan the ballots, see what, but it doesn't connect it to you in any way.
I'd like to clarify, we have two different systems here, correct?
Right.
Providing the ball, which is the accurate ballot.
Thank you, and then my my last question is, so um, is there a yearly or maintenance cost to this system?
I do not think there is, we have annual maintenance on our machines. But I do not believe that there is annual maintenance on, well. You know, I bet, I'm sorry, I can't say for a certain, um, without purchasing the poll books, um, I. Haven't been trained on them, I don't know if there is the annual um maintenance on them or not.
Maybe we could get that information for the budget, um, so the initial cost is twenty-two thousand.
I mean, I think, I think there might be software updates that we might do to the program. But as far as like the computers themselves, um, they do have a recommended life of ten years. So, you know, after ten years, they would, we would look to to purchase new computers. Um, but they do software updates, I know on a on a regular basis.
The only other thing that I did see online, and of course, there's a ton of information out there, is that, you know, advantages and disadvantages. And you're someplace to say, yes, the possible disadvantages that there could be possible happening. So, I mean, I think that's probably out there for everything, but that is also important that I saw.
Thank you, so.
Uh, we average around fifty, so this will be due center half? Um, it would, it would, uh. I would like to try to see if I can make a position for everyone. Um, I hate to get rid of my election inspectors, but it would, it would theoretically reduce the number of election inspectors, it would probably cut it in half.
And I I think I would need to know what, if there's an annual maintenance or continuing the law.
Uh, Jess, you're looking to, if this would uh get legs in that we'd approve this. To start in the spring election of twenty twenty-six?
Yes, yes.
We'd have to build it into our budget for next year.
Yes, and then I would need to train my election inspectors on the use, well, I would need to be trained on it. The election inspectors would need to be trained on that, so to give them a good nine months training period. Um, where we wouldn't have to worry about an election up and coming, so we could be nice and trained. Prior to the first election that we would use it on.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have um some concerns. Right now, we've got the checks and balances, you've got two people and they're um. Checking and balancing, correct? Um, with the machines, you won't, we won't have that.
With the machine, you're talking the computers, the poll books. No, there is one person that sits up there and they verify the ID, um, there's still two people that are handing out the ballots. So that that is what the state law dictates, um, so that is what.
And one of the things my concern is, is that they don't um go up up, they don't do any federal testing or certification on the poll books. And there's a lot of.
Not federally, no, they do states, they do state certification.
Um, you know, but that makes me concerned about security.
Well, every, every states does its own elections, um, there is no federal election system. Um, so the state of Wisconsin has certified these poll books and they have been in use since twenty seventeen. And there has been nothing to show that there has been any irregularities. In any of the municipalities that have been using them for the past, you know, six, seven years.
Should shift between WISVOTE and Badger Books?
WISVOTE is the statewide election system for the state of Wisconsin. Um, that is the system that all of the municipalities use, we are required to use it. Um, and that is what is, uh, it was developed by the Government Accountability Board. Um, which then changed Wisconsin Elections Commission. Um, so WISVOTE is the statewide registration system, uh, it was a. A major upgrade from what we had previously, which was called SBRS, statewide voter registration system. Um, it is a a major upgrade from that, um, the Badger Books is just the component of the. The Wisconsin Elections Commission was tasked with developing an electronic poll book system. And this is what they have developed, um, based on what the uh state legislators have tasked them with doing.
And so when you, when WISVOTE comes up with the list of voters, do they send that to Badger Books? I mean, how does Badger Books get our list of voters?
Badger Books is the software program that's, that's run through WISVOTE. Yeah, so it it's, Badger Books is not a standalone private company, it was developed by. Wisconsin Elections Commission as part of the WISVOTE system.
And if there's any system malfunctions or failure to connect to the internet or faulty wifi. Um, we're gonna have long lines or voters if we can't access the Badger Books on the day of the election.
Right, um, it first of all, it doesn't connect to wifi, um, so that's.
How do they connect to each other?
Their wires. They they connect through wires, um. You know, obviously, I I don't know the ins and outs of the IT of how computers work, but um. They they are serviced by a router and a server that is maintained right there. Um, they are all connected together, um, within that building. And, um. Yeah, that's why we would print um a copy of the poll book, so a paper copy, just in case.
When I was researching also online, um, I ran across one that said. That the poll books are considered one of the weakest links in the election. So my concern would be about the security, hacking, make sure there's no cyber issues, all of that good stuff, and of course the cost.
Right, again, it's not connected to the internet, it is um completely secure and all data would be transferred. Um, via a flash drive or USB drive or some sort of portable. Drive that would be maintained by the clerk's department, so, um, yep, no hacking allowed.
You made the comment that we have an aging population of the uh poll workers. And that mistakes are made, you know, maybe they're stealing, saying the wrong name. And now you're gonna throw in the technology component, you don't see that as a problem with an aging population of uh poll workers?
No.
Interesting, okay.
I don't, I've mentioned this to them and they are all very excited for that. Uh, a lot of it is not the technology issue, a lot of it is the physical issue of having to write. Um, so that's what I say when, when there's an aging population of election inspectors. Um, they have issues with the scene and the writing, that there's nothing wrong with their mental capabilities using technology. It's all in the physical capabilities.
Thank you, uh, just a couple, just a final comment on this, if you have to pass, and things to say here, uh, it's a. He could be Mr. Fat Checker here, but uh, uh, under the um, uh, the brochure here, it says that. Badger Books communicate via wireless router. No worries on that, uh, you you know, it appears we're gonna have um several opportunities to look at this. And this is a informational, and thank you so much, um, it's a, you know, I think we all want secure. Uh, secure elections and, um, you know, there's been a lot of, uh. Lot of information and some misinformation about what is a. a lot of information and some misinformation about what is a uh secure election and what is not a secure election. So I think as we get forward on this, and we do have a change in the elective process here, might be good for us, or we do that, um, i- if it meets a few of the budget and it gets to an item or it comes up to the future board, I would like to suggest perhaps we invite the public in on a public hearing just to see, you know, what their feelings are on this. So um uh it it is something to do with our elected process and given that there's already questions that are out there, uh I think maintaining the transparency in that, when folks speak on that would be. Thank you very much. That was for information only. Any other discussion, questions? Thanks again, Katie. We appreciate it. I'll scroll to the village administrator report.
Absolutely. Um, excuse me. After having ignored uh staff's efforts over the last several months, um Big Lots signage is being addressed through the issuance of municipal court summons. Um, we are working closely with legal counsel to take um action as necessary to ensure the Big Lots signage is removed um as they again ignored staff's orders uh that have been previously placed, both both verbally and in writing. Uh, winterization of parks facilities and DPW equipment has kicked off. Um, hate to be the bearer of bad news, but it is that time of year. So we will be starting with the winterization of the uh splash pad. It has been shut down, but we will look to winterize that as well as other park facilities. And then um now is the time of year where the transition of the uh public works trucks for winter operations begins with regards to the installation of um plows and salting equipment. Uh, Veterans Park Pavilion is on track for its uh planned uh um December twentieth completion date. Um, everything is moving along very quickly there. We most recently placed an order for um interior fixtures, being like the uh um tables, picnic tables, what have you, and we continue to work with um the internet provider for establishing the connectivity within the building, not only for use by tenants, but also for the um security um camera system. Uh, last but not least, uh this Saturday is Fall into Grafton event, uh which is held in Paramount Plaza. There'll be kids games, a chili cook-off event, arts and crafts, as well as the uh annual pumpkin derby. The fun starts around eleven AM. Hope to see everybody there. That's what I have for reports this evening.
Thank you. And I hear Chief of Police Staff issued a fall summer trip.
Yes, apparently village staff has a little bit of breaking rights in that our uh chief of police is the reigning champion of the chili cook-off. Um, that being said, he is welcome to all cha- any and all challenge. Um, and apparently the judges will not be police officers this year. So sorry, chief, had to take a shot when I had it. Um, no, that said, uh just a fun contest and a fun event all the way around. Um, you know, it's in conjunction with the uh Chamber of Commerce and Celebrate Grafton. Um, really kind of um utilizing that Paramount Plaza space for a nice community event. So um here's here's the good weather and a lot of fun to be had.
It looks like it's going to be good weather and, you know, chief, I get a picture of Robert Conrad with that battery on his shoulder. Say knock it off, I dare you to knock it off. You need to have that bowl of chili on your shoulder that so somebody can knock it off it, rock the hill. So. You don't want to know where I'm going to be, so. Uh, let's look at the operator's license. I need a motion to uh approve the operator licenses as uh approved by chief.
I want to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Now that motion carries. Uh, in addition, we have a uh request to deny the issuance of an operator license. Uh, and uh that was in staff reports from Mr. Thomas Paul DeBurl, um looking for a motion in second to deny that.
I'll make the motion to be miracle license.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion on that?
Yes. I've never seen this in my years, sir. Is this a very unusual tip?
It is not common. Uh, business specific? Yeah, I think uh this, as I remember here, maybe I'm off on this, this is a second. Second, deny.
And these are very familiar between the past.
Yep, very good. Thank you, chief. So we have a motion in a second on the papers. I oppose, the motion carries. Uh, let's go to the report of bills. I did see some back and forth. And some late back and forth. Thank you for getting that in. And Jesse, thank you for making.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Jesse. So my, I did not expect that tonight, so.
I just wanted to make sure they were good questions, so I wanted to make sure the information got out there because the action is for this evening. So I'm happy to, happy to report back.
Yeah, so um we did see that it's there, I'll need a motion in the second for further discussion.
I'll make the motion to.
A second.
The motion in second. Any other further questions, Bill and Bill? I, I oppose. That motion carries. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. I'll second.
The motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much and thank you for suffering through our long meeting time. Thank you.